You today, we are expecting uh just one of our board members just be here uh in just a moment, I would like to go ahead and get started. Uh so again, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. As I mentioned, just such a busy time of the year. We have seven uh guests in our audience today. We're thank you for coming. We also want to say for those of you online. Uh thank you for being here. I I'm sure there's some of you listening in necessarily see with my owl eyes. Uh or my teacher eyes as I would say, uh and then also I just wanna say thank you to our USBE liaison, Ron Hall. Uh and he potentially might be online, but just know we always feel his presence and are so grateful for that. Okay, so uh to begin, we have our pledge of allegiance, remember this here, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which we are nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanna make a note before we just move into the rest of our agenda, but we are going to, we're just gonna switch two items. Um we have a closed session uh scheduled on our agenda today and we're going to bump that uh just. Uh after, we're gonna start with our discussion and action item uh from Merit Prep Academy. They are here, so thank you for. As we're beginning our meetings of uh just board members, oh Susan, how did I? I forgot to mention that. So we're still waiting for one more, Susan, thank you. We're just starting, so um thank you for being here. Remember Paul's first. Um so we're going to just uh bump, we're just gonna switch those two agenda items. Okay, so with that, I do, I haven't asked to give any board member thought today, right? Just thought in the spirit of being December and uh I would do this a little bit more lighthearted. And uh I decided to see the powers of using a little AI to help me put this together. Um and I really was pleased on the third rendition, I I got what I. Yes. So this is a take on uh the night before Christmas. 'Twas the season of learning and all through Utah, our charter schools thrived with a purpose and awe. Teachers were guiding with patience and care as students found pathways uniquely theirs. Families engaged with their schools every choice, each community strengthened by each student's voice. And here at this table, our role is quite clear. To stir the, to stir the vision that guides them each year. As snow dusts the mountains and holidays near, and I'd really like a lot more snow so I can start skiing. We gather once more with commitments sincere. To listen, to question, to lead with intent, to ensure charter promise and resources well spent. Let this meeting remind us amid calendars tight, that our work shapes futures, expanding their light. So with gratitude steady and spirits held high, let's begin our agenda with purpose. And maybe some pie, I get some. Warm holiday wishes really to each of you. Now onward we go with the work we must do. Thank you all for being here and looking forward to our meeting today. That was really fun. Yeah, I I was actually pleasantly surprised, ChatGPT. But I, well, and I did feed it. I did, I I created a really powerful prompt and then I. Yeah, okay. Uh so with that, I I do have any public comments today? Okay, excellent. Thank you. And we can go ahead and we'll move into our consent calendar. It consisted of our November meeting minutes and our monthly financial report from October. And I am just looking for a motion to approve our consent calendar for this month.
Uh Chair, I move that we uh approve the consent now.
Certainly, great. So I have a motion, I can approve from Vice Chair Olson, a second.
I'll second.
Great, and a second for Member Beesinger, the discussion. All those in favor approving our consent calendar, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Great. Alright, so we've moved through that portion of our business. As I mentioned, we're just adjusting our agenda a a um a pinch, so we're going to go ahead and invite. Uh Merit Prep Academy to please come up to the table. Um they have requested board approval to add online learning to their school model. While our board directed such requests to be considered after, this was, this came up in conversations uh last year. From uh after the authorizing committee finalized its process. But Merit seeks an assumption because they aim to become a statewide online education program provider with USBE. And their submission is due in February. So the timing of when we're asking schools to. Uh because what we were finding, just to provide some backstory, is that we were having these requests come throughout the year. And due to just the changing space of education, more schools were engaging and wanting to explore online options. So we as a board wanted to streamline that process for us and so. We want these, all of, all of the schools within our purview that are looking to do this, we ask them to come in the spring. However, this, our process isn't totally on point yet and the timing of this is in February. So that's why Merit is coming, is coming to us today. Just to provide that that backstory. Associate Director Stephenson, would you like to provide some context? I'm I'm not quite sure if we can, or if we'd been happy to turn it to Merit, but just to provide. Uh just some backstory for the board as we move forward, that would be.
I would say you introduced it really well um and why they're uh coming today instead of in the spring. Um and uh again, they will like to become a state online education provider, uh that is through the State Board of Education. Um and so that is part of the ask and Chair, if one turns to them, I think we'd be ready for that.
That would be great. We'd love to hear from you. And I think specifically what we're curious about obviously is the why. The behind this and then I'm also very curious in the how. Uh to that process too, because we know that online education comes in lots of different shapes and not necessarily as effective as we'd like, so. Um if you could talk to both of those points and then we'll open it up to the board for questions and and a vote from there.
Wonderful. Um would you like?
Yes.
Maybe we can just introduce ourselves first. Uh my name is David Weisman and. I've worked in a variety of roles at Merit. Uh if this is approved, I'm transitioning to hopefully become. The coordinator of the program. Uh and I'll explain a little bit more my experience, uh but I've worked in online education for multiple years, my backgrounds uh. In higher education, so I've worked closely with BYU Online, uh designed my own courses, taught, I've worked uh. A lot of my research also has been in online learning, so I feel like. Uh this match is a good one and we understand the task and that it is a significant project, you know, but we're also being very careful. How we rolled that out. So that's a quick introduction and then.
Um I'm Jessica and I'm Assistant Director at Merit Prep Academy and I've done that for eight years, but prior, right prior to coming to. Merit, I actually was working through a contract at um USBE, the the Special Education Division, specifically for professional development. For mostly for charter schools and rural schools and a lot of that included like a variety of different educational opportunities and environments. And so this type of introducing or developing this type of education, the platform at the school. Um kind of speaks well to the the very need of educational environments that we need to provide. So I've been working at Merit. Providing um specifically working with the Special Education Department for a while to provide that type of support and growth. And now I'm working with like all the title programs at the school and working with teachers and their individual growth as with constructional coaching. All those, all those fun things. That comes along.
And then our board president is online. So Rachel J is joining us virtually. She had another meeting that she needed to be at, so she couldn't. There she is.
Hi Rachel, would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Um well, I'm Rachel J. I'm the Board President at Merit Prep Academy. I don't have all the degrees that our wonderful staff does.
Amazing.
Care about our charter school and we have a lot of students at Merit who have. Um been utilizing the hybrid model of learning and utilizing Utah Online School and seats and things like that and that's. Been really valuable for our students, so we just as a board have seen the value. In that type of education and that's where we are, we're supporting our staff and wanting to move forward in this direction because we can see the. Where the world is going, where education is going for our country. Yes.
And then Mike, Mike, thank you, Rachel. Mike Condi, our director, wanted to be here. He's had some pretty serious health issues and has actually been in the hospital. He's, he's doing better, uh but he wasn't able to come today, but he wanted to let you know that he wants to, he wanted to be here as well.
He's a big champion of this. And he feels like this is a really strong and powerful move for our school and for our students in providing some more options.
So the why, should we start there?
Sure.
So many reasons um that we're really excited about this as a possibility. Some of them are practical, other, others are um ideals that we hope to to continue. This is uh, we believe that this change in our charter is in support of the mission and the original intent of what this charter was. Uh that it's not a change to it, but in a to do in our mission in providing individualized learning. Uh even hands-on learning in in education, in online space, we believe that we can do that. Uh and the leadership part and the service part, we believe we can extend that as well. What we're finding is that there are more and more students in our school that are needing these types of online experiences for a variety of reasons. We have very large special education uh population at our school, larger than most. Uh and we've, we've, that's just one group, but there have been many groups that have needed that type. Of space online, uh others have had other reasons for doing that. What we're seeing is that there, there have been positive results as Rachel mentioned and other programs and we're grateful that they're there. What we'd like to have is our own programs that we can take better care of our kids, uh so we can know their needs, they'll still have that individualized attention. Um it also to expand our mission beyond our borders. I don't know if you've been to Merit Prep Academy, it, you have, we were just talking about our graduation. Thanks for coming. Um but we have a castle, the the outside is, you know, the facade is a castle where the merit knights. Uh we can't expand the castle. Uh our cap is at six hundred and when we got up to five hundred, we were. Really struggling to make that work. And it was changing our focus as a mission because our, our classes, because we didn't have the space to. Create new spaces to have small class sizes, they're getting too big. So we're kind of caught in this, in this growth challenge where. To have the funding for, and this, I wanna make clear, this is not about funding and we certainly are not trying to ghost enroll and then put people in. Other programs and we never see them. So that's not our intent, it's about education. But funding comes into it, it's a reality of our school. And so when we grew even up to five hundred, not even getting up to six hundred. Our classes were bigger, we didn't feel like we could give the same type of individualized attention that we wanted. And but we needed that funding for the program growth that we were having. So we're like stuck in that like back and forth, push and pull. So that one of the things that excites us about this is that we're able to expand our enrollment and our reach and our mission. And we don't have to expand a physical space. Um we're also excited about, we're just talking right before this about the possibility of of blended opportunities when we have online options that. If a student, for example, needs to take some time to be able to do something at home. It's, it's, it's something that we, I don't really like the word control, but it's a little bit more of a controlled environment in the online space where we can create an experience that we know will work. With our students.
Well, we've already been needing to incorporate that as um like a, a model for some of our students, depending on what their individual needs are. Like Rachel was saying, we've been um helping it to facilitate students having the opportunity through S E O P already with other organizations and um even with. Outside agencies to provide and to supplement some of that, some of that educational experience. We just wanna be able to. Have that in-house with our own facility and we found that by. Because of having some of that need, we're still in addition to, they're not just like, hey, here, take this S E O P course and we're like, we leave them to their own devices. As a school for, for like best practice and for outcomes, we're actually still providing them some educational support. Typically when that situation happens. So if we're already providing that educational support when that situation happens, why not? Bring that online component in here and we can continue to couple that with some um additional support too. And it's not necessarily that it's controlled, but it's. That we're able to more closely monitor it for the effective outs, like yeah, the effective like student outcomes that we need. For our student population because we care about them, we care about their individual growth and development, we care about their educational opportunities. And this just allows us to have that already here and then we're not trying to find other like resources, but like that's what we do as charter schools, right? That's what everybody does is that like, we don't have it, but we will find it and when we find it and we create wonderful connections and we have. Through um this opportunity, but we would like to be able to create that in our own setting so that we can continue to provide it for our students.
Yeah, we believe in our brand, we believe in our mission, like we really do. And I I say that as an employee and also as a father, not to bring the emotional part into it, but this school has changed my kids forever. And I will be forever grateful for what we do there. We believe in that, we wanna expand it. We feel like this proposal. Not a change, but it is going to be support. We feel like it's a win-win for the in-person programs and also for the online possibilities. And hopefully for the state as well, like we want, i- it's inevitable that this trend is going to continue. And so we want to be one of the solid providers that provides the best online education possible in the state. So we hope that it's a win-win that way as well. We've been working really closely with the crew at uh SOEP. We just submitted the long initial application last night and I partied it up on there. But I learned a lot from it. We want to learn, we want to go through the right processes, we want to go through the training like. And do it well and we feel like we have the team and the experience to be able to do that. So that's, that's an overview of our why.
Thank you. I was just making a note. I I got a little choked up there.
Sorry, I did too.
Well, no, but I can be, you can feel that was very authentic.
I mean that.
And I also, and and you, you, once you jump into the, to the how, uh it's okay to wanna control the process.
Yeah, we feel good about that.
Right, as you were talking about that you are very, you feel that you have a, a school that is doing powerful work and. It is hard when your students, you wanna still, you don't wanna lose them, but they need support.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh okay, so there are lots of ways to do this, or we see lots. So how does, how, what, what's, what will separate your, eh, talk to us about that how or what that looks like? Uh I'm very curious.
We're, we're curious as well. You decide because um you know, it is, it is a new venture for Merit. The, the general concept of online education to me is something familiar and it's become a passion. Uh we have other teachers who have also taught online in a variety of contexts, not at Merit. Uh so we feel good about the, the how as far as our team is coming together. Um part of that how is also gonna be a network that's more expansive than, than the merits. As I was mentioning, my experience has been in higher ed, been in education for twenty-one years now, same, we both have. And I, I trust a lot of colleagues in a lot of, you know, different spheres and I've already been trying to form my super teams. Many of them are just enthusiastic about helping and so the, the consulting and the just like making sure we're doing this in the best way possible. Is something we're very interested in. Um I'm not entirely familiar with the different options that we have outside of SOEP. Um if that isn't officially approved, we hope it is in our communications with them. And so our intention would be to go that route. And from what I understand, after the initial application, they have a series of, you know, trainings and onboarding and. And we look forward to learning uh from them and making sure that we're following the processes and being very thorough that way. So the, the how would be to follow that line into the provider that way. We're not interested in. Uh as we mentioned, and farming out our students to other programs, uh maybe that's not the best way to phrase it, but like I.
We wanna develop our own programs and our own like. Yes, exactly. And not necessarily just take a third party and plug it in and like have one of our own people like kind of relate it, that type of thing. We wanna be the one that's developing it. So we can follow those processes for convert student outcomes, yeah.
And and a lot of those options are already in place. Uh I think, you know, SOEP is excited that we're already established. L E A, not an outside program trying to come in. And you know, mold themselves to what this would be. And so as far as, you know, laws and procedures and all of that and supports. We would use, we would lean on that, uh we would have to expand that in order to also meet the needs of the online program, but there'd be a lot. Back and forth that way where we would do both. Uh so we would initiate, we wanna start slow. We wanna make sure that we're doing, this is part of the how, is that we're being very careful in the growth. Uh of our online program, uh having been in the entrepreneur world as well, I've seen growth tank as many companies as. The opposite of growth, like uh it's just an issue of scaling and so we're actually gonna do this. Uh we would like to move forward one department at a time in our core areas. So we have already talked with our, our English department, they're very excited and off board with this. And we've already, hopefully this is okay, that we have preemptively, we're starting to make plans. Uh we're not assuming anything, but we are trying to put pieces in place. Uh so we will be using Canvas as our M L S and our, you know, standard mode of delivery for these courses. Which is the same as we do for our in-person classes.
And our school has been using that as our M L S since twenty twenty since, so we've been using it as a tool. They are very comfortable with it for the past five years.
And that's what I designed in when I was, uh I didn't work for, but worked closely with BYU Online, uh and so I. Very familiar with Canvas and how the opportunities that are there with Canvas to do online learning. So that would be our platform, um and we would be, we have a lot of, you know. Evaluation measures that we're putting in place to just like. Move forward in, in bold, good ways, but also move carefully. So that we're making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students at every step and adjusting as we go. And like we said, like we're, we're ready to learn as well. We want to, we wanna understand the needs of the states and make sure that we're being good partners there. Uh we appreciate the collaboration and we, we wanna make sure that that back and forth is a win-win.
Right.
So yeah, it would be, uh our board is also, and Rachel, feel free to chime in, our board is very involved and supportive. As part of that process, they will be approving our curriculum at every step, uh they will have access to all of the course shells so they can see in real time what's happening. Our last, in our last boarding, we, board meeting, we established an official meeting schedule to review every two weeks what we're doing in the online. Online programs and the building of the curriculum, so we will be working hand in hand with our local board. Uh and with the state as well, so. Kind of think of what you might want to know otherwise with, with the, the, the how.
Uh thank you. I just, I, I can see like the questions. Yeah, please, board members, um please, let's go ahead and start.
Thank you. Um I, I love your wise, I wrote everyone down. It's obvious that it is. Very thoroughly thought through and I agree with that this is the future and I totally understand. I mean, at your explanation of what your students need at, at your school right now and then you're trying to meet those needs. I love that and I. I think it's very well done and very well explained. One thing I'm trying to reconcile and it's probably just because I haven't connected the dots is how SOE, being an SOEP provider. Um works with what you were saying as far as your why. Because at least from what I understand of what you're asking for, if you become, if, if you become an online, if you have an online component in your school. Then your current students would just participate in that online program. They wouldn't need to go through SOEP. This SOEP is for, is kind of like, that's a different lane, right? As the E P would bring students from outside of your school in.
Yes.
Okay, and so can you talk in, in that case, cause so you're kind of asking for becoming an online. Um having an online program and adding that SOEP, the SOEP part is making sense in your how. Can you tell us a little bit more about um your how with your students who are currently enrolled? What does that look like? Have you thought through that transition for your teachers and for your students? Are you gonna have, for example, different pathways where students are fully online, students are blended, students are. Uh on campus, can you talk a little bit? I'd like to hear just a little bit more, cause it's obvious you have this very well thought out, so I'm sure you have a great answer. Um but I'm just trying to connect the dots as far as how, what, what's the how for the students who are currently.
Currently in Merit.
Enrolled.
Yeah, I think that population is going to be, like if we're approved with SOEP, they are going to bring in. Significant attention and enrollment just because there are so few. I mean, it's just a reality of the demand versus how many providers are officially approved through them. So that enrollment side is gonna be important, but like you said, the. The, the why part of what we're doing also involves the students who are with us and we're already dealing with that. In, I think, really good ways. Uh one of the things that drew our family to Merit, and we came from a homeschool background. Is just the individual, the ability to shift needs. Honestly, we reinvented our educational plan for our family career. Of like, what do they need? Like, what's happening? How many classes at Merit? How many classes at home? How many classes online? And our counselors do a great job with managing that and so we're used to that dynamic already. So the online portion would just be replacing. Other programs that are outside of the school with what we have. Our thought right now, and and we'll learn as we go. Um with trying this with the English department first, is that we're going to give, it's not course release because they'll still be teaching, but you can think of it that way. Course release from the physical in-person class um to have that period for online education. So they'll have that such section of English eight, just like they would if they were in person. And so the students who are in Merit, it was simply a role. It's super streamlined, easy. They would just make that choice as an individual and as a family and with counseling. Uh whether they would like to take that in person, or they'd like to take that online and what fits best with their life. And so we feel like that's gonna be a really easy process, in fact, much easier than what we're doing right now. In the application to see, it's getting that approved, waiting through it, and sometimes it takes a while and they're getting behind before they even start. And so this will allow, and the teachers will be, just like they are now, they're just assigned to that role. And so as that expands, then if, that, so that the practical part of the how is that. SOEP is important to us because just being honest, that enrollment from outside, besides wanting to spread our mission out through the state, it provides funding. And so that is gonna have to, over time, and that's what we're slow in our pacing, over time grow, for example, our English department. Because eventually we're going to have to hire. Right now, we're trying to do this almost on a zero budget. Change where we're just replacing the in-person class with online while we're learning and while we're expanding. That money then will be invested back into the growth of the programs to hire more teachers. Yeah.
That is clever. Yeah, it's so.
Cause thought through a lot of this.
Interesting, you know, so if you make it just part of your school.
Yeah.
Right, you, you see, it, there's, you're like dealing with pathways and tracking. But you're basically saying that the students who are enrolled in Merit, they wouldn't enroll in SOEP, but they'd be enrolling in your. Version of SOEP, so they follow that same process?
Yeah.
That's, that's actually.
Though, I, I need, I need more clarity from them because we just got an email recently that direct enrollment is not what they would prefer, so I have to, we have to figure that out.
They do not and it's challenging.
Yeah, so we, again, we want to, we want to be good partners and we will, but that's, that's our initial feeling on what we would like to see happen. Yeah.
That's, that, it, it's clever. I can see, you're actually avoiding a lot of minutia by doing that, that's.
So, so to the benefit of the students.
Yeah, really aligns to our relevance to why we want to include this on raise. Because we're already having to include an online component to meet the needs of our student population.
Yep.
So we just wanna have that pathway built in already to our scheduling system and pro, and procedure.
So I guess I have a question then. So like, if this were approved today to be able to offer online courses at Merit and we did not. Go through SOEP, that's our intent, so we're thinking to do, but if we did not, we could still just offer directly our own online courses or no?
Yeah, that's.
I think that's what we're.
Depending on what the board.
Based on the language of the amendment.
Exactly.
Okay, and that could be, like, I guess we're just, I don't know.
Actually, and let me just say, whatever you do with SOEP, that's kind of a different animal and I, I do agree, there's a, a good place for that. For someone, especially as a funding mechanism and it would shore up if you're the online program, whether it's in your school or. Or SOEP.
Yeah.
Um I really, I really like the thought of students, even if they're enrolled in your class, they actually enroll as if they were in SOEP. And they're treated that way and supported that way. There can be in a blended model, you've probably experienced this and this will see why you're doing it. There can be a lot of confusion as far as attendance requirements, which tracker you want and. And this actually kind of clears it up, I'm taking an SOEP approach to the online program, so. Actually, either way you go, I think it's a very clever idea and I would love to see you do that and see how it goes.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on the curriculum itself. You, you kind of mentioned it would be more of an in-house, so you're, you're not looking to go have an educational. Provider, provide the, the curriculum, right? Yes. So, um how far along are you in that process? And would you start in ninth grade and then go to tenth and eleventh and twelfth in, in this, in the, the educational or in, in the English space? Um, and then I'm just kind of curious a little bit more about the board and, you know, you mentioned they're, they're, they're okay with it or they're, they're, they're positive about the direction, but has there been any process of approving it? Have they gone through that?
Yes.
Process?
We have.
Yeah, so in our, in our last board meeting, um, and we'll have another one next week. Yeah. So in our last board meeting, we presented a curricular, kind of a shell, a plan and outline of what we intend to do with these courses. We have begun development. Um, we haven't gone full in because we're waiting for approval. Like it's just, it's with limited resources like you're talking about and just focus areas. We're, we're taking it step by step. Um, but we have the shells made, our campus courses. We're intending to offer initially, uh, all grades for English and our core courses from seven to twelve. So, uh, we've met with the department, uh, the English department with those teachers who will also be involved in the development and curriculum. Uh, because we already have those courses established in person, we'll also drop on that, although there will be changes. I think sometimes, uh, I, sometimes I think there is the assumption that online is moving a in-person class to the online space. That is not what we're doing. There's a totally different category to it. And I feel like I have a good grasp of that, but we can draw on the base of what we have. So we already are advanced in that way in the sense that we've been teaching these courses, you know, for fifteen years and, and developing them as something going. Um, so there, there is progress, but we haven't gone into full development mode. Uh, we would, no pressure, but we would hope to do that next week. Into really, and we have that calendar out like ready to jump in and, and that would be our next stage of post-approval to, to get these courses ready to go. Um, but yeah, it would be all grades. Uh, we're, we're focusing on the core. Oh, sorry. I should have mentioned.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Seven through twelve. Exactly.
Would we do a twelve? Maybe do an English.
We're debating on that.
Yeah.
Uh, what to do as well, uh, because there's a lot of different options and things that we can do. And we're also managed, we're also balancing this with a, a very strong, uh, and, uh, I was say the right way, like we've had a huge jump in the strength of our concurrent enrollment program or partnering with BYU. And we want to continue that. So this needs to align with that as well. And so we're working with our coordinator there to be able to do that, especially in grades eleven and twelve. We want to make sure that we're not taking away from those opportunities. And so it might be the case that we're funneling students. It's always their choice, but funneling toward that track of, of getting college credit in that online space. And so we want this all to fit together. So we'll see how that comes together, but we also do want to have the options for eleventh and twelfth graders to take the regular online courses if that's their choice.
Um, because having a spectrum of different options is going to benefit our student population.
Yep.
And so there will be some that that will be provided. Um, like the concurrent enrollment, that will be the right placement for them. But some of them, the online component with eleven to twelfth grade, like each options would be the right component and some of them the in-person. That is the right component. So we're just trying to expand also the spectrum of different opportunities that are going to individualize it for absolute means.
And I'm just. So everything's okay at the school.
Yeah.
Um, it's interesting you chose English. That could be one that requires a lot of hands-on reading essays, you know, it's, it's, it can be, um, labor intensive.
Yeah.
Um, is, would, would the teachers in your school primarily be in charge of ensuring that those essays and, and the content and all of the things that are coming through are, are graded with fidelity? Yes. Um, is this a, is, who's going to oversee that, I guess, is?
Just the teachers will be assigned just like they are in in-person class. So that will be their class. They will be the teacher, they will grade, they will do all of those things. I'll also assist in that. Not in the grading part, but just in providing support that way. Uh, English was a personal choice that I made because that's my background. So my, my doctorate's in Hispanic literature. I felt very comfortable in that realm. And so I was just thinking like, okay, if we're going to start with one, math scared me, I'll be honest. Um, so in, it just felt like it's an area that I've already developed curriculum in, and I feel strong there to be able to provide that support. And that's why we went with that. It was.
Still also in looking at our specific staffing, our English department would be stronger and be more ready to be able to take on something like this. Also, we've got quite a few really talented and seasoned educators in our English department that have taught in multi-different.
Including online.
Including.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that department, um, has been expanded. So we used to have three and a half FTE in English. We currently have four. And so it actually, quarter and a quarter, that's true. So we have this wiggle room space to incorporate online. If this is, we're doing a growth model. So that was another practical choice that we made. Yeah.
So your current enrollment, so we've, so you're approved for six hundred, is that what it heard? And you're currently around that five hundred mark. You just alluded to that when you were talking about space. Oh, okay. So that gives you enough wiggle room.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't want you to be at five seventy and now, and you have to start turning students away that.
Well, and the other thing is that we are hoping that we want to treat these online, um, courses, these online classes, like we do our in-person classes, we want to keep them small. So we want those to, we're counting at thirty for those sections. Exactly. And that, a part of the reason is because we don't want to lose that individuality that we can gain from that. We don't want to lose that connection with our students that we could have if we are like having a, like a hundred students and we're, we're getting like lots of different outside enrollments. We want to still keep it small so we can keep that connection and keep that intentional learning objective happening with, um, and that I think will be one of the things that will make our online program unique.
Yeah. I've seen so many online programs turn into a cash cow. And I, we're not into that. Like we want these to be, it's like Jessica was saying, small, direct one-on-one as much as we can.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm, uh, meaningful.
And we want them to get off.
Learning experience.
Like that's part of our mission is that they go into the world and they lead and they serve and they do things. And we believe that we can do that online as well, where they get off their computer and engage. And, um, I think that will make, you know, be very unique in our approach. Um, we're pretty excited about it. Can't tell. It's gonna be good. Yeah.
Yeah.
Chair, can I ask you a few questions?
Please.
Okay. Forgive my lack of educational knowledge in this. I want to ask a few catch-up questions. Do I ask for all of your? A state online education program or SOEP? So that's a state entity, correct or not?
Marie, can you help us?
Yeah.
So you have to go through an approval process.
We just submitted last night.
Okay, so they, they vet you. And if you meet their criteria, they approve you as a provider.
Provider.
Or they're, do, do they have the recipe and they want to make sure you can deliver their recipe?
No, what I understand is they have, they have guidelines and like processes, but those. We would have the ability to create our own curriculum.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you'd like to work with them?
We would, although this conversation makes me think of lots. I mean, um, yes, that is our intent. Um, I think that there are really good benefits both ways to be working with them.
Canvas, I've heard of work Canvas a thousand times as a non-instructor. I think Canvas is, I'm going to call it an app, that might be unfair to Kansas, that distributes and receives information. Am I at least in the ballpark or is that not like, how do you use Canvas to deliver this? I just.
It's an entire learning management system, which means that's, that's a place where you can deliver all the content for the course. Students can submit their assignments, there's grading, there's.
My own kids have logged into Canvas to get theirs, to get their half assignments and.
Yep.
Okay.
And it, and it.
Just your, it's your infrastructure.
Yeah. And, and I can say this, and it's not as a criticism. I don't think that most teachers are using Canvas to this full capacity. Um, I've seen Canvas do amazing things. Uh, we would also probably be investing in additional plug-in support things that would allow Canvas to have more interactive features. We want to have an active weekly discussion board, this video-based, this like semi-asynchronous where, you know, it's throughout the week where they can decide when they want to post and comment. Um, it's very important to us that our learning platform provides a space for community. We've seen so many times in the online programs with our students and my own kids, is that you get like into it and then it's you and the computer in this usually asynchronous way that they can finish as fast as they want. They can open, entry or exit whenever they want. And there are benefits to that. And down the road, we might, we might explore that. Right now, we want our courses to be on the same term system. We want there to be, uh, communication among the students so that they can have that community experience even when they're sitting at home on a computer. Uh, so Canvas allows us to do that and it's, it's actually pretty effective.
Is Canvas a nationwide thing or is that a Utah-specific thing?
They're based in Utah. They're all over.
Yeah, it's, it's the large, it's one of the largest. It's not the largest and they're definitely a leading, uh, pretty management system.
Okay.
So they're pretty widely known K-12 and higher education. And then just to give you a couple other counterparts, D-2L is another strong. And then Blackbaud, uh, Blackboard is another one. So those are like, I would call them competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alternatives.
Okay.
Utah, it's, you cater this state.
Yeah. Yes, it is here in Utah. So it's free to us.
Yes.
Because it's paid for by the state. That's another.
Thank you for catching us.
Oh, those are great questions.
A couple more questions. I think these can be quick hitters.
Okay.
When do you want to roll this out? So I could, we gradually, but like, would kids in fall of twenty, uh, where are we in? Fall twenty-five, fall twenty-six have this option?
That's our.
Yes, that's our goal.
That's the goal.
That's our goal. And so if that doesn't happen, we understand that. It would be working with the state and SOEP. But if this is approved, uh, well, and if we have options to do it ourselves, even if it takes a while to get into the SOEP lane, um, we would like to start in, in fall with limited courses.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And they're not asking, we just, they're not asking for more students just for this to be. Okay.
Apparently we feel there's enough with a room that we can operate under six hundred without a change.
Are we, I ask this maybe to you or maybe, I don't know, to the more of the board. Um, are we making a recommendation to USP?
That was my next question.
Are we authorizing this change? Cause I would think we could just authorize this.
That is, that is our proposal.
Yes.
Is that you authorize the change in the amendment. I mean, it, you approve the amendment proposal.
Yes.
We, we can't, we, and we're not able to authorize the SOEP. Process, but that might, well, that strengthen your application based on a vote to do.
Yeah, and, and that is just one avenue path that we could take and we would like to explore that. But from my understanding, the proposal that we're putting forth for a vote is a change to, I meant to be able to offer online courses. We'll just. That, that we have authorization to do that. Yep.
So it can just be an update to their charter.
Mission or purpose is, is simply delivery.
You, you expect your four hundred and thirty kids to maybe do, well, maybe none of this, but some of this, some of the four hundred and thirty will be doing some of this.
Yeah.
That's correct.
They'll move to some sort of a blended model.
Yep.
But the additional, if you get there, hundred and seventy-ish kids, you'll, you'll, you'll have new kids join your school because this is now an option.
Right.
I think it would be very popular, especially as, like from our view, how we're going to design these courses and like how carefully we're going to create the online educational experience. I think that, um, it's going to be very attractive to a lot of people and we're excited about that. Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? So I, I appreciated that question when we're being, that gives some clarity on how we might want to form a motion. So I'm going to put it out to the board, uh, Marie, could you potentially offer us a suggested, some language of a suggested motion that might help?
Just approving the.
And to allow online or to, is it allow? I don't know if that's the right.
To, uh, that they're authorized to offer online.
Motion unless there is.
I can see it's.
Um, and, and before I make the motion, I ju- I just want to make a quick comment. I know I'm doing this backwards, but, uh, I, I, I support this happening for, for a couple of important reasons. One, first, going to member Marshall's question, which is one of the most important questions. Is this something that your board has considered carefully? It's been vetted and they've approved it. The answer to that was yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say if you would like, uh, just some additional context, uh, the merit board, uh, Chair Jay, uh, was the one that actually reached out then to state charter school board staff. And so the board has been very engaged with staff as far as what this looks like. And then, uh, you know, sending over for today, so, uh, the board initiated all of that and understands that the contract is between, uh, your, our, our board and their board.
Thanks. That's, that's very helpful. So first, uh, the, the board's considered this carefully. The board has approved it. Second, thanks for that addition. Um, this has been vetted carefully with our staff. Uh, you've sought input. I'm glad that that's happened. Third, um, this is something that, that fits within your mission and you've considered that very carefully.
Yes.
Game plan. Uh, beyond that, I, I don't know that it's our role to really micromanage, uh, a, a school's request to go in a direction that they believe is something that's innovative, is going to enhance student learning at the school. Um, and so the amendment request as written is very simply to change the language of, of paragraph six E of your exhibit A, which we now call a schedule A. I know that. It's an insignificant change. Um, so, um, a- anyway, the motion I would make is to approve the, um, amendment request that's been submitted by Merritt Preparatory Academy specifically to, uh, change the language in paragraph six E of their schedule A, uh, to allow them to provide educational services through in-person blended or online learning formats in accordance with all applicable Utah laws and Utah State Board of Education policy. That, that would be the motion. Uh, to the extent you are successful in becoming a, uh, an approved provider um, through the state program, uh, SOEP, great. To the extent you are not, great.
Okay.
That's. Could go after it. Sorry, I ramble both before my motion. So Chair, hopefully you can.
Yeah, both are appreciated.
So the motion is, uh, to support the amendment, uh, offering online blended hybrid education. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. So we have a second, uh, from Member, Member Hutchings. Uh, any other discussion?
Can I, I just say, um, along with that, I think, I think one thing, there are a couple of things that are exciting about this and, um, I already talked about um, your approach for the students. But one thing that's, uh, kind of settled in my mind is, uh, when I was reading your application and I was reading how project-based, you have a lot of discussions and community experience. My first thought was, whoa, you know, online, how are they going to do that? And so now after hearing this discussion, I'm excited to see how you maintain those parts of your school mission in an online and hybrid program. And do everything you can to maintain that because that is something that will push, um, the experience that, uh, a lot of other stu- schools may have as they move, you know, try to offer these different options to students that really is part of the future of what we're looking at for our students and, and meeting all their individual needs. And as you, um, with fidelity, um, stick to your mission in your hybrid and online program, you're going to develop something really exciting.
Agreed. Was thinking the exact same thing. In fact, I, I'd love to hear back from you any year.
We would.
Uh, just, uh, just to that point, because I, I really think that, that that is the future is that we still we're very human in an online space. And how do we do that and how do we do that well? So, uh, excited to, to.
I would.
Sure.
I'm excited to know what we will learn a year.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yes, agreed, agreed. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table to approve this amendment request. Um, it has been seconded, seconded. Please say aye. Any opposed? Great. And no abstentions? I don't think so. So motion passes. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, and Chair Jay, thank you so much for being here. We're excited to, uh, Yes, and Chair Jay, thank you so much for being here. We're excited to, uh, for you to support with your leadership, so. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. We appreciate all the comments and all of the learning that even just this meeting has given to us. It's been. Yes, it's been very valuable. I'm I am excited to see what we continue to learn as we grow this.
We are too. Thank you so much and thank you for being here early so we were able to adjust the agenda and your flexibility. Wonderful. Well, congratulations. So thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
I actually a quick question. What is the process from here as far as making that change to reach out? So and then you'll send us the documents aside. Okay, just wanna make sure we're good.
Great, great question, cause that would be something I'd be like. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, okay, everyone. So, oh yeah, please.
Just a follow-up.
Sure.
Comment. I love what. Was said, I can't wait to see how this works and, you know. Is there a process or a way that we have where we can have people come back in a year, whatever?
I think so. I think we could, let's make a note, um, I think Marie just gave me a heads up that we'll make sure that we put this.
Director Marshall got to do that with.
Yes, exactly. And I think that would be, I think that's an excellent.
Um, cause I think that's, uh. Really good to share. Those innovation and good ideas and ways of work.
Exactly, exactly.
Sure, we're gonna find things that don't work.
That was a great start. Uh, okay, everyone. So it is, we would like to move into a closed session. And, uh. And I believe once we make that motion, we're we're gonna stay in this space and make sure that all of. The technology is turned off. So, uh, we'd like to, we're going to move into a closed session. We do. To be able to move into the closed session to discuss the character professional competence or physical. Or mental health of an individual and specifically we are focused on the, uh, character competence or health and, uh. Great, we, and just as a reminder, we can't take any action. Uh, oh, thank you all. Thank you. Um, we can't, and thank you for picking yourself. We just didn't feel like moving our stuff, so thanks. Uh, so, uh. So with that being said, we can't take any action in a closed session, um, and we will do a roll call vote to go into the closed session and also to come back out of it, but we can take. Action as we come out.
I'll make the motions here.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I moved that we, uh, end a closed session to discuss the character professional competence. Health. Have an input.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote to to move into our closed session. Uh, so we'll go ahead and start with member Marshall. Great, thanks. Member Paul's over. Uh, I. Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, so we are now in a closed session. Let's just be sure the owls are off.
Yes, and it was a it was a it was a dusk like run. We were doing a trail run. And we had heard this owl for weeks because we this was a place we used to go and I it did not like and we really swooped down as we were running. It was it was one of the most frightening experiences.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, excellent. Welcome back everyone into Fox Online. Thank you so much as we've been in a just a very meaningful close session. Uh, we have voted, we are now out and uh so with that, we would I'd like to entertain a motion um to a point.
Uh, but and Chair, I I just wonder if before that make
Oh, yes.
What we're doing and why?
Thank you.
Because I don't maybe everyone knows.
No, you're right. I just have assumed that the charter world in Utah knows what's going on. So thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, so welcome back everyone. Um, we will have an opportunity as we wrap up our meeting today to have some um director comments. Um, from Dr. Kramer, but with that, uh, we were notified about a week. Well, it's been over the last several weeks that um, Dr. Kramer has decided to step down um and resign from the executive director role uh here at the State Charter School Board uh for personal reasons and um again, we'll talk a little bit more about this and and later in the meeting. I would fully support uh that that decision. With that being said, that leaves a gap for us to fill. Uh, and we've had lots of conversation uh and deliberation in terms of what we would like to do. And so uh, we have lots of important business coming in front of us. So we would like to appoint uh Associate Director Stephenson uh as the interim executive director while we undergo a formal search process over the next several months. And uh, and so that is that that's currently where we are. So thank you. As I jumped just right in expecting everybody to know what's happening and I
And Chair, do we need to make a motion to that effect?
We do.
Okay.
We do. So um so with that context, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint uh Associate Director Stephenson as the interim executive director.
Yep, I second that motion.
Okay, I could I guess I can make. I'm okay. I just made that. Great. I just made the motion. Uh, and we have a second from Vice Chair. Any further discussion to that before we take a vote?
But I I just want to, you know, in public
Yes, please.
Um, state how how much I appreciate um the board's consideration and action in this and how much we appreciate uh um our what's happened in the board and what what um Dr. Kramer has brought to our board and appreciate that and appreciate um um Associate Director Stephenson's willingness to take on that interim role and look forward very much to continue on with the great work that's already happening. Thank you so much.
Can I add to that?
Please, great.
No, I I echo uh member pulse for I I just want to add to um yeah, our we have the utmost confidence in uh the in Director Stephenson, but I also want to say we have the utmost confidence in the complete staff.
Thank you.
The complete team. Uh, this team, it's clear there they are green berets. They just they for for such a relatively small group. So much has been achieved. Our confidence and comfort level with the the staff, the full-time staff that's in place is uh e- extremely high and we we feel like we can not just get through the next few months, but we're going to continue to thrive. And that's really because of the competency and and uh time spent by the staff. So I just want to make sure we acknowledge the entire group.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo that point. Um, oh great. I was like, where's Amy? Didn't see her there. Uh, we just you all know, I mean, how we feel about all of you and we are a team. We have such important work that we do and we just want all of you to know that uh, as I say to my girls all the time, um, you know, uh, we're always in your heart and we've got your back. uh, as I say to my girls all the time, um, you know, uh, we're always in your heart and we've got your back. And, and I think that's the case for all of us. Um, do, doing this work is, is an honor for me and I've talked about that. I am a better human because I am part of this board. And I actually feel like I'm doing work that's going to make a difference a hundred years from now. And that is because of all of us. And so during this process, if you feel you have any questions, please know we are an open door. I think all, I think all of you have my saddle. I know. Not all of you on owl land, but um, but in terms of our team, you are welcome to use that. You are welcome to email us. As we begin the search process, we want to be as transparent as possible and to have your, your insight and input. And uh, just know that we are a team. Uh, we just want to make that really clear. And we're so grateful for all of you.
Great. Did we vote?
We have not yet. And I think for the vote for, I was just thinking for this, I, I'd like to do a, a roll call vote. I just think this is pretty important and for public record. Think it would be important. So uh, we have a, we have that, we have a motion on the table to appoint Associate Director Stephenson as our interim direct, so interim Executive Director. Um, Member Marshall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great. Member Pulsefer?
Yes.
Resoundingly yes.
Absolutely yes.
Great. I am a yes.
Yes.
Great. And our best yes. Excellent. So our member pass, our, our member pass, our vote passes um, as of tomorrow at five PM. Um, Marie, we are, we are honored and excited for you to step into the interim role and I'm sure we will continue to touch base. And um, and to all of our stakeholders that are listening in, in a, of our schools, if you have any questions at all, uh, we encourage you to reach out to any of us um, just as we move through the next several months. Okay, uh, it's lunchtime. Uh, so, uh, let's go ahead and I think, are we doing our gift exchange or any lunch?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, so we are going to break for lunch, have our gift exchange and we will be back give or take around oneish, we'll, we'll come on back into this space. Okay, so thank you all so much.
Yep.
Reporting out and then at two, we have some schools that we're going to be doing some signing. But there's so I'm going to go back over and grab a cookie in a minute here. Oh, they came over here. Great. So please don't hesitate to just get up and grab a snack or whatever you need. As we continue to move through the meeting, I think I'm just Eric had to take a quick. Phone call, so he's going to be out for just a minute. I'm not sure where. Hey, great. And we're online.
And I'm letting in a full bunch of people.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks. Well. Just want to welcome everyone.
We know when folks are ready to go and we'll start.
We're just getting folks. Yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and start. Is that okay?
Yeah, we have like four more about us too. It's like.
Just a minute I'm going to click in. So welcome. I there's quite a few folks that have joined us online. So thank you all so much for just coming back from lunch. And a wonderful gift exchange and just. I'm always a I know that this holiday, this is probably one of the hardest times to work in education this month. I feel is a really challenging time. Because. There's so much anticipation and then also like I mentioned, just relationship dynamics that all of our families interact with this season. Just a little bit differently. So I really appreciated that we just had some joy and laughter and I hope for all of you. That you've were able to find, you can continue to find those moments in your life. So right now, we just have a this is a report out to the board item. This is a initiative that we're really proud of. And we've had an opportunity, I think we mentioned this in our last board meeting. In in November, we had an opportunity to present at a national conference. About our mentorship work. So with that, we have lead forward of mentorship, the mentorship network. We have been working, we have a grant as a state charter school board. To work with West Ed and create to create lead forward. Into mentorship program and our first cohort is about to wrap up. And we're going to be hearing some of those successes, challenges and plans for launching the second cohort, which I'm really excited about. And I believe we have. Robin joining us online as well as some of the schools. I'm not exactly sure who's here. So Marie, if I could pass it to you or. Amber, I'm just not sure. So with that, welcome everyone and Maria, if I can, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you so much, Chair. And screen sharing right now.
Let me do mine, sorry.
Just can.
Don't.
Oh, there we go, guys. Okay, perfect.
All right, well, I'll introduce us a little bit and then you know, our folks that are online can also introduce, but. We're so pleased to be partnered with West Ed and to talk about this project that we've done this lead forward. At the Mentorship Network. As Chair mentioned, we are just completing our first of three cohorts. That's what our current grant is for. And so we're excited to celebrate the success of year one and share that with you today. We've got two slides here. So really, this was a project that I started dreaming about. Almost seven years ago, when I first came on staff at at the State Charter School Board. And we have lots of great programs, both from us, from our associations and networks and the State Board of Education. That really do a lot of good mentoring and those are usually done on an individual basis. But the the dream I had at that point was, what would it look like if we had school to school mentoring? And so. Something that's happening at one school, shared, you know, directly with with another school. And so so exciting to see this come together. Some of the goals here were that we would really create. A community of collaboration and growth across our charter network here. That we would share best practices of what's happening at our high performing schools and that those things could then be. Implemented, you know, anywhere and and really just have that that collaboration and that sharing together. And really, the ultimate goal here was always that continuous improvement and support for all of our Utah students.
Thanks, Marie. I'm Robin Chait, and we were so excited to partner with the Utah State Charter School Board on this wonderful project. I am joined by a few of my colleagues at West Ed, Amy Evan, Kelly Weinbein, and Prudence Harris Minton. Who've been the professional developers and coaches throughout this process. And we're also joined with two partnerships of schools, four schools, and they will introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their projects. In a moment, but just to give you a little bit of an overview, we had six schools participate in this first cohort. Three mentor and three mentee schools. The mentor schools were those. We reached out to those who were at the seventy fifth percentile or above on the state state framework. And we reached out to mentees, potential mentee schools who are at the thirtieth to the fiftieth percentile in the state framework. And when we reached out to the potential mentor schools, we asked them to identify a practice that was key to their school's success. So they responded, they identified this practice. And then mentee schools were able to take a look at what were the practices that the mentor schools thought were key to their success and that they could then share with a mentee schools. And the mentee schools picked the mentor schools based on that practice that they wanted to learn about. So that was kind of the structure. Of the matching. We started the project last February. Of course, we're going to get started a little earlier with the second cohort. But we've been doing monthly professional development with the mentor and mentee schools. A lot of the time has been creating a structure. For the schools to work together and providing them with resources. So we had. An implementation plan template, we had a mentor workbook. That helped the mentors think through how to share their promising practice. And then we also provided some professional development to the mentor schools and how to serve as a mentor. And then to the mentee schools on change management and best practices and implementation. So we've done between April and now, we did do one in person session at the Utah Charter Schools Conference. And then over the summer, we provided individualized office hours. And now. I'm excited to turn it over to ranches and Bear River, who will tell you about their project and their experience.
All right. I guess I'll start. So Stephanie, Stephanie and I were identified as the mentor school from the Ranches Academy in Eagle Mountain. We were established back in two thousand and four. Stephanie actually wrote the charter for our school. As a group of parents looking for choices in education. And we're just a tuition free charter school serving K through six students in Eagle Mountain. We have about three hundred and sixty five students and we love it here.
We're currently expanding, but not students. We love our small size. We're just adding some space for special education and some of our specialties, but. That's the feedback we get from a lot of our stakeholders is that they love our small size and the individualized attention we're able to give to our students.
Hi there. I'm Peter Allen, and this is Carrie Day who's with me. So we are over at Bear River Charter School. We're located up in Logan and. We were able to be the mentee school. So we got to work. With both Levi and Stephanie and kind of talk about where we, yeah, where we wanted to go. So we are currently in the middle of doing an expansion. And and looking at that and increasing our numbers a little bit. This is. Yeah, Carrie, you've been here about a, yeah, how long? Two years. And for me, about two and a half years. And so we've been really looking at. What do we need to change? What do we want to grow? And what kind of culture do we want to affect? And so that was one of our reasons for wanting to do it. We've had good growth and success, but we wanted to keep. Yeah, keep moving forward and and becoming better. So. We really felt like we needed to focus on collaborative teams and leadership and growth. In the next couple of years, as we're expanding and making sure we have a lot of pieces in place to be successful as we continue to bring in more students. So we can speak to this first. So the the practice that we really wanted to focus on was creating effective data driven collaborative team meetings. So for us. This was great timing because we really felt that this was a need that. Our school had was to create a culture of these collaborative team meetings. And when. When people reached out to us about this, we were able to. Look at the different mentor schools that were available and Ranches Academy. Said, hey, this is kind of what we felt like we've been able to figure out. And for us, that really felt like something we wanted to focus on with it with the school that had been having success there.
Yeah, we were, we were. I guess proud of the fact that we were identified for this. We have a really awesome team at our school. A lot of our teachers have been with our school since the beginning and we just have. Yeah, I mean, without our teachers, we would be, we would not be the school that we are. And so they. Are we have a great community. We have some great collaboration going on in grade level teams and in between grade level teams. And so when they reached out to us and told us about Bear River, we thought, yeah, this is probably something that we could. Just kind of share some things that are working for us with other schools.
Yeah, I think this has just kind of been built into our culture over the years and our teacher retention and everything has lended itself to having the this collaboration among our teachers.
Yep.
Do you want to speak to it first? Go ahead.
Well, I I think for us, this was really. A positive experience just for the fact that it gave us an opportunity to not only just talk about the. The one thing that was identified that Bear River wanted to. Work on, but just we asked them a lot of questions like, hey, how do you do this? How do you how how do you do that? Like, as issues will come up for us this year and we. I we feel like it was a mutually beneficial relationship and a partnership, you know, not really a mentor mentee type thing. It went both ways and. You know, we kind of were that connection. We just really appreciated having that experience. So I think for me, that was like, you know, the biggest positive. And it was just kind of a organic, like it says, practical application. We were able to like come up with some things we could. Really start on the next day, you know, and so and I hope it was the same way for Bear River.
And we love the fact that we, I mean, charter schools by just the nature of who we are, we kind of feel like we're on an island. A lot of times we don't have another. Sister school or a district to to fall back on. So having this relationship, we've reached out to Peter. A couple of times just with things completely unrelated to this whole program, just with questions and hey, how do you do this and? And and just getting information and bouncing ideas off of them. So I think having be this relationship established. For me, that's been one of the greatest outcomes from that I that I didn't expect, but I'm grateful to have.
Absolutely. No, we feel the same way. It's been really mutually beneficial. And we loved the the collaboration and the opportunity to just share ideas. And I I know for sure absolutely benefited from talking to ranches and. You know, trying to get some great ideas. They've got a wonderful staff culture there and we're really working to boost that in our school, so. I think we're ready for the next.
We really like Peter and Carrie too, like. You know, on a personal level, just to get to know other people in the charter world. That has been a good thing, too.
Yeah.
Do you want us to keep going with this, ranches?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, yeah, um, well, I mean, some of the impact, some of the benefits that we've seen from this is just. It opened the door for us to collaborate in the future. And I I really hope that branches and and Bear River can continue to work together. Share ideas if needed and and keep. Keep that partnership working because I felt like it really, really helped us. And what I hope for is that we would be able to do this with other schools too. So you know, it's really hard to do that with charter schools that are close by. But other schools within the state, I can see this being a wonderful. Opportunity. Anything you want to add to that, Peter?
I would just say for us, I mean, we were really hoping to get some physical tangible outcomes to be able to be working towards. And so the relationships have been awesome. I'm sure we're going to be chatting in the future. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a good conversation, right? And got to talk about a couple of questions we both had. But for us, we really focused a lot this year on improving our. Professional learning communities. And it was awesome to have people to just bounce ideas off of that weren't in the midst of it, right? And they were able to give us some really good. Objective, you know, help looking at it. And we've really improved those meetings. That's an ongoing process and project. But the school culture has really shifted quite quickly in in basically, you know, four or five months. And we've really tried to hone in on having focus and intentional use of meeting time and just making that valuable for everybody. And so that's been really, really helpful for us. Again, we just feel like we've been able to freely share information back and forth. Again, because we're not, we're not competing for the same students, we're not in the same region. But we have a lot of the same challenges and issues, right? So it's been awesome to just freely and openly share ideas and. It's been really great. I would say the last thing I would add is. We've, you know, really looked at. You know, is this research based? I I think Ranches Academy, they asked you and said, hey, what's making a difference? We really feel like it affects collective teacher efficacy, which is one of those highest. Endpoints based off of John Hattie's work. And so we really felt like PLCs was a big, big part of that. And we wanted to impact students. And we just feel like. This communication moving forward is going to be, yeah, much better and we'll continue to improve and grow.
I think I was surprised that we were able to see change so quickly too. And, you know, we all, we both put in a lot of work for that, but just at the last meeting that we had, you know, I thought, wow, this is actually. Going in a direction that we really wanted to go. And I I thought, you know, with culture change, usually that takes a long time. And and we've still got a ways to go, but I I was excited to see some just kind of immediate change and. Some progress right off the bat. So that's been really encouraging for us.
Yeah, and we loved, I think the impact for our school twofold. Peter, you kind of mentioned it a little bit, but it was nice that we, you know, we both serve. The same demographic, you know, K K six, K, you know, younger school, elementary age. I think it would be very difficult to have this relationship with a school down the street from us. Because like you said, Peter, we are, there is kind of that element of competition, but where we're in different areas of the state. I never once felt like, oh, I want to give them our secret, you know. Open and able to share ideas with. And even though we were kind of. Providing ideas for PLCs and for for. I guess for questions that they had, we were able to then kind of look back at ourselves and say, well. Are we are what we're doing works? Why does it work? And then we were able to also kind of reevaluate what we're doing and and changes that we were able to make to to our own PLC process.
Yeah, and we kind of had to ask ourselves the question because we do have such high staff retention, like what if we start losing people? Would this culture change? How do we make sure? It keeps going because, you know, if we had an influx of new teachers. It might not work as well as it's working now. So to kind of address our processes and make sure that. You know, our policies and processes are in place and understood by all of our staff.
Yeah. Right. I think we talked about that, that we, I think all all four of us definitely felt it was less of a mentor mentee and more of a professional mentor. I think we talked about that, that we, I think all, all four of us definitely felt it was less of a mentor-mentee and more of a professional partnership. I think that was, yeah, we just all definitely agreed on that over and over and over again. Just it was, it was very mutually beneficial.
Yeah. And I think for us, the, the most positive times were the time we had to meet and discuss. It was great to go to Bear River, even though it was a little bit of a drive for us, like it was definitely worth that investment of time. And for, for our purposes or for, for our, the best impact was that time we had to meet with Peter and Carrie, either online or, or in person to kind of brainstorm and bounce ideas off of each other.
Yes, we've really enjoyed it.
Yeah. One, one of our suggestions at the top there was ju- just to maybe even slightly relabel. What it's called would just be calling it UAPCS Professional Partnerships. Just because I think you might have some resistance to others. We, we really felt like we were ready to do it. And we recognized that while we had improvements, we weren't, like we, we have some great practices that we were doing too, but we really felt like this was more of a, a partnership. And so that was just one that the four of us collaborated on to say, hey, maybe if it's looked at this way, you might even be able to get more schools involved who might be reticent to do that if there was, you know, a label or stigma that they were.
You're muted.
Mentees. I'm still off mute. Can you hear me or no?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah.
I think this just gives us from our standpoint, seeing the benefit from it is able to reach out to maybe other schools and say, okay, it worked well with Bear River. What other schools? I know we're talking about, I just reached out for schools that are doing really well with their ELL program. It's like, okay, we're, our demographic is changing. Who else can we reach out to? We had a great experience doing this for, for PLCs. Who's having success with ELLs? And what are other schools that we can take the initiative and kind of get some ideas and bounce ideas off of them? So it kind of gives us, we, we feel encouraged and empowered to not feel like we're stuck.
Yeah, to expand our network and have more resources of people who are, you know, in the trenches, trying to do the same work that we are with very oftentimes, you know, few in numbers, few in administration, a lot of people wearing a different hat and different hats. And so that's been good.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Marie, do you want to take a few questions or should we do that after the next presentation?
Let me check with our board, Portia.
Let's keep, we can keep going.
All right. We'll keep moving and save questions for the end.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. So now we have Walden and Mountain View.
Can I pause? Is there any way to see them? Is there any way that maybe we, I'm, I'm sorry, Robin, to interrupt. It's just we can't, we can see your slides, but the way that our technology is set up, we just can't see you as you're speaking and I'm, I'm missing that. I, I mean, we can hear you clear. I just don't know if there's any way that we can.
When they go to share, they're given like options and she can say like side by side that shows like her plus her PowerPoint.
Prap and Brigette will they hear that?
Share and click.
We could, what we could do also is we could just share through the presentation and then I'll stop sharing. So that you could see the faces. Is that okay?
Yeah, let's try that. I'd rather, I mean, the slides are great and, but I'd really like to see you. That's just my preference board. I don't.
No, I asked about the same thing.
Okay. Great. I'm just used to the, you know, just living on Zoom, my slides and then seeing my column. Whatever people play.
Wait, so there's, is there another way to, to do it?
So, no, probably we just can't, I don't know. Are you still, are you still sharing?
So on Zoom, you would unshare and then you would share and on the right, there's like, like five or six options of how you want to like show your slides. And some of them have you like on top of your slide or on the side, like side by side, like.
Custom view? But we'll try this. If it doesn't work, then I'll just stop sharing.
Okay.
As soon as they go through.
I know we're all like, sometimes it's just a little bit different.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's all.
We'll just, I'll stop sharing as soon as they go through their content. How about that?
For what it's worth, this is Peter on our end. We can see it when other people are speaking and presenting. That's changing automatically on our end.
Oh, okay.
There's this display for the computer you're using.
As long as I know. Ask Robin if she can stop sharing. I can share it on my own. This is who's speaking.
Oh, I see. Yep. So, um, yeah, I'd rather, if you want me to, I don't, I don't want to speak for all of you, but I, I don't necessarily need to see the slides as much as I'd like to see you.
I agree, Chair.
So, okay. So if you can just stop sharing the slides and we can, you can email us the slide deck or stuff. Do you, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So Robin, maybe just stop sharing and then can we see the Zoom people?
Yeah.
And we, I'm, I know that this is a tech thing. I don't need to interrupt this. It's just my, yeah, my people-ness.
You're the boss. It's okay.
But that is true.
Do we need to show our faces?
Oh, yeah. I, well, and all of you know what it's like when you're teaching and you're, it's a bunch of just names on a Zoom. Tic Tac.
Show our faces.
And I don't know. Yeah, I don't know, Amber. We can see, you know what I'm saying? Like, is there any way for us to see Zoom? Versus us on there? And, and I'm mindful of our time. Let's take like one more minute to figure this out that if not, we'll just keep going. Wait, yeah, yeah. Carrie, thanks for your patience. I can see. I know I just went, right? Okay, that's great, everybody. Okay, is this okay? Now, okay, let's go ahead. We can start with this second set of schools. And it looked like it was, uh, Waldorf and Montessori.
Walden and Mountain View.
I just saw that. My apologies. Walden and Mountain West. Great. So Robin, we're, yeah, go ahead. They can, we can, we're happy to hear from those schools now. We can see you.
Okay, go ahead and start. Is that okay? Walden and Mountain View, just use, you can look at your slides so you know what you're talking about, but they're going to look at you.
I look at you too. Your faces are wonderful as well. And there's nothing magical about the slides. Hello, everyone. It's so great to be here and thank you for making time for us. I'm Lois Bobo and I'm the Executive Director at Walden School of Liberal Arts. We were chartered back in 2003. We feel like we're one, one of the older existing charter schools in Utah. And we are a K-12 Montessori-informed school. And I think we are the only K-12 Montessori-based school in the state. And only one of a handful that go K-12 throughout the nation. So we feel that that's a pretty special niche for us. We, we were, well, from the beginning, we've had an emphasis on a very individualized, personalized approach to learning. And that has included opportunities for expeditions, nature-based learning and most most relevant to this discussion, project-based learning. We were, you know, many of our experiences mirror those experiences that Ranches and Bear River have had. We felt very honored to be invited to be part of this and our opportunity to connect with Mountain View over project-based learning has been a really outstanding opportunity for us. So thank you all for this opportunity and for taking the time to listen to us just a bit.
So I have to thank Lois, of course, of course, first. And what a joy it was to work with her and her school. And Robin and your team. And of course, the Utah State Charter School Association. I was very lucky that I came to this school, the beginning of last year with the mission of moving us from a Montessori into more of a project-based approach. And right away I ran into people that were, we, we applied and received an innovation grant through the state that helped us build an outdoor classroom and develop nature trails and enhance our program that way. And then I ran into Robin and saw this great idea. And I found a school that actually can talk about Montessori and project-based, exactly what I was looking for. So it just fell into our lap and all we've done is try to soak in as much as we can from the experts, but we are, we are very much entrenched now in, in a project-based program and looking at a much brighter future than perhaps a couple of years ago. So, practice, we obviously were looking at moving from Montessori to a project-based approach. We really want to address the challenges that we had with poor test scores. We felt like our students weren't getting the 21st century skills necessary or the depth of learning and I think most important, that building of a connection and community that I think is the most important thing that we can, we can offer. And so how did this go? It gave us opportunities for collaboration. We formed new partnerships with community and schools and it was a chance to be a, a part of this initiative that really spoke to us so well. So the impact, you know, test scores are, were a big deal and we weren't doing so well. Since implementing project-based, because of all the all the factors that really go into this and I've outlined, so it's really helped us go take deeper dives in the material. Our project-based learning is based on benchmarks. So the benchmarks are laid out and then, then the projects are built around those benchmarks. And we bring in our enrichment classes, art, makerspace, music, and all of those are a part of the project. And it creates the depth of learning that I don't think can be duplicated. Strong sense of community each year. Well, the last two years and moving forward, we have a big project-based celebration at the beginning of the year. The first two years, it's been a celebration of Utah history. We have foreign animals, horses, indigenous peoples, all kinds of things from dinosaurs to present-day Native American culture. So this is just a, a picture of, of, of that day. And the beautiful thing about project-based are the celebrations because we, we celebrate as, as, as a community in the school when we celebrate with our parents, when they come and see the classes and their depth of learning. We celebrate in the community with things like this. We ask partners, for partnerships in the community. So it gives us a chance to make real connections that we use beyond just the project base as well. So again, with community, we've seen real statistics that show that our PTO participation and our parent-teacher conferences, the attendance and participation of both of these groups, which I think is indicative of, of a great school. And certainly a school that values community. Our parent-teacher conferences in the last two years have grown in attendance exponentially. I believe this year we were over 80% parents attending those conferences where just three years ago, we were at 20. Also, our PTO is highly involved. Two years ago, there was no participation from the PTO. This year they're involved in all school activities and we have, they're in charge of classroom parents and all of those kinds of things as well. I think the last thing I, I need to mention too is, is the service opportunities, the project-based presented. We have a project called Nine Months of Smiles, which every month, one of our classrooms takes on a community service project or works with a nonprofit in, in our, in our community. So every class from kindergarten through seventh grade has an opportunity to make a difference in the community. So we have a student here for hopefully eight years. They'll help eight different nonprofits during their tenure here. That's all. Any, well, I guess I shouldn't ask if there are any questions. We may be doing that later.
Uh, Lois, anything else to add?
If I were to add anything, it would be, I, I'm sure you can tell that Mountain View was already very much on their way toward a really solid project-based learning application. But I feel like what this opportunity gave us was the opportunity to come together and really look at the practices that inform our schools together and to really hone in on the data, hone in on the theoretical underpinnings that we have. And I, I believe that we were both greatly enriched by this opportunity and it has strengthened both of our schools. So thank you all.
Yeah. And I got Lois and her team validated the road we wanted to take. So that was a big deal for us to get that sense of, oh yeah, that's, you know, this is going to work. You know, and, and they really helped us fine tune things that otherwise we may not have noticed and said it was okay to do this or do that. So, so it was key to our success for sure.
It was a great experience. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you both. So now I think we can have questions for either partnership.
We've definitely opened for questions. I just thank you for these very thoughtful and thorough updates and presentations and Lois, it is an honor to see you on the call. I, during my tenure at Maria Maestory Academy, Lois was an incredible mentor and an asset to my success as well. So just, it's, that's all. I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you for all you're doing for us at the state, for all of charters. Stephanie, we're really grateful for your leadership.
Thanks, Lois. Questions, comments? How are you feeling after hearing this? I am so pleased. I'm so pleased. I mean, yeah, please, remember Paul's over.
I am super excited that this happened. I have wanted something like this to happen because I think when we learn from each other, it is so powerful. And, and your comments, from what I'm hearing from you, it was powerful. It was good for, in both cases. And would you think this is something that would be a good thing to do again in the future, be repeated?
I, I can speak to that. I, I think it needs to be expanded and more schools need to be brought into this. There's never time to reach out and do it on your own. We needed the scaffolding that Robin and her team provided to us. Otherwise, we would not have, have been able to follow through with that. But the, but the rewards were definitely worth the time invested.
And Robin, we volunteer to be a mentor school next year.
It's good to know. Thank you.
I would say we would definitely be interested in doing something like this again. There, there are so many elements that every charter school has to manage with very limited leadership. And I don't think any school has every aspect figured out. And so I think if there are certain topics or subjects, it's, it's really great to just be able to share ideas and, and learn and grow.
Yeah, go please.
I just want to quickly mention a couple of things. One, I think that Director Stevenson is, I just want to give her a shout out because I truly think at least part of the genesis of this was been her. That was briefly mentioned at the beginning of this, but this is such a powerful tool. I, you know, we just don't live well on our own islands, right? We need collaboration. We need interaction. We need a sounding board. And this is all that. I guess I'm curious, so my question is, and maybe Robin, you'd be the best first voice here, but how did you match? Like, have you, I, I love that, like, we have kind of schools with some similarities. That I love the geog- the geographical diversity and there's no sense of competition, but, but, and, and I, well, and I'll just say before I let you speak. But, and, and I, well, and I'll just say before I let you speak, um, I do know that, that there is an intense program. This was strong schools. Helping other really good, strong schools. This is not a program that was designed to help strong versus, and I'll use air quotes, weak. Uh, I, I don't mean we have weak schools, but I know we have schools that have issues, but this was schools. That are, you know, thriving to help other schools that are doing really well. But I still am curious, like, how did you match and how can that be scaled? Cause I think that's a tricky part of this.
Yeah, so we, we basically reached out to schools that were performing at the seventy-fifth percentile or above. On your state performance framework. Um, we asked them if they wanted to be mentors and if so, we asked them what was a practice that was key to their success. And so they told us the practice that was key to their success. Then we reached out to potential mentee schools, um, as I mentioned before, um, schools between the thirtieth and fiftieth percentile. And we had them look at those responses and they picked the mentor school that they wanted to work with. So I think some of it was based on the key practice that they wanted to learn about. Um, but, and the schools can speak to this too. I think, you know, it might have also been based on not having a school that was too geographically closed. So that you'd be competing or like other things that they knew about the school that they wanted to learn about. Um, yeah, so we basically, the mentees picked the mentors and it, it worked out. Um, and as you mentioned, yeah, this wasn't, um, this wasn't a project for the, for the lowest performing schools because, um. Those schools would need a lot more support than just, uh, a peer mentor would, would be able to give.
No, I'll just jump in quickly too. I think there was a little bit of magic there too, where we had these two schools. These two Montessori schools, Mo- Mountain View and Lois, like a perfect match there happened. And I think to your question about scaling it, and Robin will speak a little bit to Coh- Cohort Two, if you're interested. Um, we are thinking through like, how can we make sure that that match still happens, that mentee schools can look at the list of mentor schools and see. There's someone I wanna learn from. Um, so there is a question about scalability, but I think because you have a very diverse charter sector in the state of Utah. We're really confident that we can grow this program in Cohort Two and grow it even more in Cohort Three.
I, I just have one follow-up question. Has there ever been a discussion about cross-state boundaries? I'm just curious to be very noodle on that.
So actually, when we did this presentation at NACSA, we had that question. Um, because there was a state that was potentially interested in doing that. A state with a smaller charter sector may not have enough. Schools to match up within the state. So, uh, we, we, we could do it that way. Yeah, it's, I, it's, it's definitely. An option. It might be more logistically difficult, but it's definitely something we could do.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, this has been great. It's, uh, you can obviously see that the schools that they, that were paired up with, uh, have very similar interests and. And the shareout's been really positive. Um, just curious, in this process, there sounds like there was a lot of collaboration between the two schools that have been paired. Was there also opportunities for this cohort to come together collectively and talk about some of the? The, the best practices and shareouts and kind of share that collective efficacy, I guess, across, um, the whole cohort?
So I can respond to that first and then I would love to hear from the, from the schools, but when we met every month, the whole cohort met together. And there were opportunities to talk as a group in addition to opportunities to talk with their mentor, mentee. And then also some opportunities for the mentee schools to talk and the mentor schools to talk. So there were definitely opportunities for the whole. Community to, to interact. Any schools wanna chime in?
I, I would just say that it, those times where we were all together. And it was a great time to also pick up some of the other practices that maybe we weren't focused on, but could talk about. Um, I remember once I was talking about our morning meetings. We have morning meetings at my school every day. And someone said, you have morning, how do you do that? And we started getting off on, well, the morning meeting thing. And the same thing would happen when I would hear something that, that, you know, we had thought about, but wanted. Maybe not put in practice yet. So it also gave an opportunity to look at all those other support things that maybe we weren't focused on at the moment. But could see other really good practices happening.
I'll just add, we did have the opportunity, um, in June, when there was the, the charter conference. We were all able to get together before that and just get to meet one another face-to-face, talk a little bit, interact a little bit. So it's been nice. Cause we were aware of the other schools all involved in this as well. Cause we would always kind of start together as a group. And then we would break out into different, um, sessions and, and meet together. So. It's nice to know other people were going through this and, yeah, learning and growing too.
Other questions or comments?
Man, I'll just make a quick comment. I, I just can't help myself. Um, wow.
I was just gonna say, wow, just wow.
So, so I, I, I was thrilled to be able to get a preview of this at NACSA from Director Stephenson. From Robin, from Peter. It's great to meet with all of you and hear your comments then and to hear your comments today. I, I'm just, I'm. Robin, I'm so impressed with you and your team, uh, for coming up with these ideas and strategies. And, um, I am just so impressed with the deep and amazing leadership we have at our charter schools. To be able to practice what, what we preach. I know we're teaching children about the importance of learning and improving. And I just, I'm so thrilled seeing our charter school leaders doing the exact same thing. And I, I can't think of a better way to do it than in the collaboration that's gone on through this program. So I, I look forward to. Hear from the next cohort and all the amazing things that, that are going to happen. So, so thank you all for your participation. This has just been fantastic.
Thank you.
Well said. Oh, go please, Tom, Maria.
Sorry, I was just gonna say shout out to our whole team, cause we really all participated in creating the content and, and providing the. Professional development as well in partnership with, of course, Marie and Brendan, who were terrific partners.
Thank you all so much for, and I, um. Will we know the next partnerships in January, February? Is that?
We can share them then. Right now, we're in that, uh, gathering stage and.
Great.
Uh, swiping right of, uh, who they wanna, who they wanna be paired up with.
Awesome. Fantastic. And I really do, I think, again, even, even on a, on a larger level. This facilitates the com- the community that we're trying to enhance and. Uh, and, and continue to build upon of the, the charter, the charter school community here in the state. And, uh, I, I'm just. I'm, I'm so, I'm just, really, I think you really summed up my thoughts beautifully. Um, the, the, the everlasting cycle of learning and growing and then how we model that. And your humility going through that process as well. It was really beautiful to hear you talk about. Uh, wonderful. So I, thank you so much and thank you for navigating some of those technical difficulties with us for just a moment. Um, I was really, I'm just glad we were able to see your faces as you were talking. And, uh, Robin, I think you probably couldn't, maybe, or you could get, uh, that slide deck could be sent to all of us. Awesome. That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, so thank you all so much. You're welcome to continue to stay if you'd like. Otherwise, um. Thank you all so much for your time today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What a great meeting. So, okay, great. So I, I, uh, just being able to articulate and to see. And I really appreciate, I, I could say, the, the tangible data points of being able to see that change in real time. And that we can see that some change definitely takes years for it to come to fruition. And often sometimes the change. Um, can be right before us, um, in these, in these moments, um, just by making us, uh, just a. A shibet.
I was just looking for an opportunity.
Okay, excellent. So we're gonna continue on. We have the next, um, portion of our board meeting I'm really excited about as well. This, because this really was an idea that came out of how do we, how do we continue to celebrate? How do we highlight the goodness that's taking place? How do we provide moments where we can hear more from our schools and what's happening? And I just wanna say, as I'm diving into this, having Director Bobo on that call and then. There are people in, right now, sitting in front of me too specifically, um, and you know, I'm pointing, kind of pointing at you a little bit, but, um. Steven Delena, I, I feel like, what was that show? Do you remember when we were kids? It was the game show where they'd bring people back from your past and. And I just wanna say, uh-huh, this is really beautiful in a sense because, uh, between, uh, Lois, but then the, just pointing. Just naming names. Um, there's lots of folks that's instrumental to my growth and I'm having a moment, um, because I joined the board when. Delena was chair and I'm just having, um, I'm just having a little out-of-body moment and also feeling a little, um. Humbled myself at this moment in time because, um, I learned so much from, from your leadership and then of course. Steve, I would never have made it as a director without you, um, in those early years. So I just, I'm so grateful to see you all today. And of course, everyone else. And I'll throw your names out later as well. Um, okay, so with that. We felt the need, we wanted to have, uh, an agreement signing ceremony. Uh, really to signify, again, the partnerships that we have with our charter schools, their growth, and this is an exciting time to celebrate. We have four schools that have updated their charter agreements and were approved last month. We've invited each school to, to come today as a signing day celebration and to share just a brief presentation. Uh, on their best practices and successes. This goes back to, and I know member Pulsofer and all, all of us, we've shared this, but we want. We, we don't want it to be a secret, right? It's your special sauce. And how do we continue to elevate that so people know what's happening and we can. Uh, celebrate all of that. So we have four schools and I'm just getting, we're gonna, we're gonna run through these in the order in which they're on my agenda. Um, but first I'd like to invite, uh, Director Tocks to the table, um, from Mountain Heights Academy. And we're gonna hear some of the great work happening there. Um, not, not all the board members are here today, but we are so grateful for those that could make it. And, uh, and then I, I have a note that we have some folks coming tomorrow to your board meeting. Is that correct?
We're just gonna continue the celebration.
I love that. Great. So welcome. And the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. It's so good to see all of you. Congratulations to Member Marshall and Member Hutchings for joining the board as new board members and. Uh, Member Pulsofer and Member Beesinger and Chair Spiker, Vice Chair Olson, Member Bassett, uh, Director Kramer. Director Stephenson. So nice to see all of you. I think I got all the titles. Uh, it's nice to be back here. It's fun to be on this side of the table. Uh, I, I, you know who I am. I would love. For our board vice chair to introduce himself to you as well. And then I have a few others that will introduce too.
Great. Thank you. So my name's Royce Simmons. Uh, it's my seventh year on the board, um, but so love working with Mountain Heights Academy. My professional job, I work, um, at Professor Brigham Young University. I'm the department chair of educational leadership there. And so. Uh, been in teacher education now for over fifteen years and, uh, yeah, a lot of work, uh, training teachers, helping. Uh, you know, a framework to use to effectively integrate technology specifically, but providing as well, but. Love working with Mountain Heights because they have amazing leadership. We have amazing personnel throughout the, throughout the school. And yeah, it's very innovative and they're all dedicated to the work that I do. So we love, I love.
And Dr. Kimmons is one of my personal board of directors members as my dissertation chair. I would not have made it through. Without his, uh, assistance and his depth and breadth of expertise. So we're very fortunate to have him on our board as well. And I would love to introduce my, uh, our other administrators, Assistant Director Anne Meets and Assistant Director Steve Davis. And all the good work that they do for Mountain Heights. Uh, you all know that one person does not a school make. One person does not a culture make and without the, the support of, uh, Anne and Steve. Mountain Heights would not be the school that it is. We also have, uh, many of our Academical West support, uh, teams, Matt Morrison. And Hannah Jones and Crystal Taylor, uh, here just because they love us and want to support us. There may be another school that they're also here for, but I'm pretty sure. They came from Mountain Heights and they'll stay for the. But we, we appreciate the support that they give us as well. I don't wanna take too much time. It's just so nice to see all of your faces again. Wanna focus on our vision of being the leaders in digital education and our mission of developing connected and successful learners. Our special sauce is filtering every decision that we make through our vision and mission. And this partnership, the signing of the agreement that we're doing today allows us to evolve a little more organically. Because I will tell you, and having sat on both sides of this table, when the decision comes, well, we really need to update this goal, the school goal. Well, that's gonna take, we're gonna have to take it to the state charter board and it's a process and it's gonna take time and it's gonna be involved. And we're like, well, we think we like that. And that, this process gives us the tools that we need to better meet the needs of our students. More nimbly, more quickly. It elevates all of the aspects that charter schools are known for. Uh, because of this brilliant idea. So whoever exactly it was to have the celebration and, um, allow schools a little more autonomy. In evolving. This is not a de-evolution. It's an absolute evolution of doing what is. Better for students than what we were doing before. Uh, so thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our students better. Thank you for recognizing the opportunity to support your hundred and however many, over forty charter schools, uh, there are in the state of Utah. At this point, uh, and thank you for your support of Mountain Heights specifically. This process was about as painless as you could possibly want it to be, working with Director Stephenson. So anybody who's listening, I would encourage you, if you'd like to have that autonomy and nimbleness in your school. This is the process for you. Uh, call Marie. She's not busy or anything. Pick up the phone and, and she will help you through it. But it's, it's been, uh, a boon to Mountain Heights Academy. Uh, and I would invite you to, if there's anything you wanna add, we'll listen to.
No, I, we did, I just get to observe all the good work that's going on instead of time because we have such a great leadership team, but, um, it's been great to just see how seamless. So much, how well the school runs and how well we're able to interface with state leadership. And so, thank you for, yeah. Making things run smoothly so that we as a board, our jobs are easy.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to just say too, I'm a father too of, uh, of daughters who, I have one graduated from Mountain Heights two years ago. And I have two more that are students in our school. And so, um, I'm blessed personally from the school as well. But it's had amazing effects in my family. And so I get to see it at a high level as a board member, but I also see the effects of all these great teachers and. Leaders in the lives of my, of my, my family members. And so, um, yeah, so it's great to be involved in multiple capacities.
So wonderful. Do we have a physical, do we have to sign, um, or is that gonna happen tomorrow?
Andrea is getting mental set up.
Okay, sounds great. Sounds great. Um. Yeah, please. Oh, yes, please, please.
I just wanna say, it's great to see Delena. I don't see you nearly as much as I would like to, um. For years, we've kinda, we've worked together and, and, um, off and on and, um, she's been a great, um. Mentor for me as a school leader and she's a great example across the state for all charter schools. I think it's a, a great charter director and leader in the state. Um, I, when I was head of school at Utah Virtual Academy, even though UTVA started at least a year or two before Mountain Heights. It was, we were constantly saying, uh, so how does Mountain Heights do that? Because we knew they did a quality job. And so, um, they are not just a great school, uh, but they're a great example for all charters across the state. And also I have had children who have taken SOEP classes through Mountain Heights and it has been a great experience for them. So, thank you for all you do. For your own students and for the charters across the state.
That is kind of you. I, I just needed to let Anne know that this is Stacy Hutchings, the one that gave us the info about the juvenile justice. This is an honorable partnership. So, uh, the feeling is mutual and thank you.
Wonderful. Any other, um, comments?
Oh man, of course. Man, this has been an awesome board meeting. This is just the best. It's the best. Delena, thanks so much for your leadership. Uh, on both sides of this table, uh, we so love and appreciate you for all of your service for charter schools in Utah. Thanks to you and your team for all the amazing things that you're doing. We love being able to celebrate our charter schools. So thank you for coming in today. We didn't mean to just drag you in as a burden on you. We appreciate you doing it. Uh, we really just wanna celebrate as, as much as we can, all of the incredible things that are happening in charter schools, including yours. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today. And I jumped at the chance and was so happy that Dr. Kimmons could also join us. So be able to see this amazing group of people and the good that you're doing in that process in Utah. So, thank you.
Excellent. Great. Um, I, I'm just looking, I keep looking at you, Marie. I apologize. Excellent. Great. Um, I, I'm just looking, I keep looking at you Marie, I apologize. I'm more just, because I wasn't, is Andrea still gathering?
She walked in, she gave a thumbs up, so I can go to her.
Okay, sounds great. So I think we're doing a physical sign, yeah. Not just, yeah. And I prefer to do one school at a time, if that, if that works first of all, for it then.
You'll be in the next newsletter.
Something that was in your last newsletter, if I may, uh, Reed Simmons, one of our juniors is on the student advisory council for the UMass State Board of Education. I wanted to make sure that as a state charter board, you knew that we had charter and digital representation on the state board of education for that student advisory committee or council. And I will tell you, they are putting those guys to work. Reed has emailed me, they're looking at statewide SIS systems and that's the committee that he's on. He's picking my brain about it. It is not just a title that he gets to have and put on his resume. They want their input. And um, so if at any point, uh, any charters, it, it feels like uh, that's a good space for him to be in. To be able to, to share voice for especially our smaller charters that might be a little uh, might be a little more difficult for them to do some of the things that uh, larger schools and districts could do. So just as an FYI.
It's great.
That's fantastic. Uh, number Pulsofer has shared with us about the SIS committee uh, and the work that they're doing.
I knew there was charter representation, but I didn't realize that there was a student. That is really good news, really, really good news.
Yeah, and he's a great student, just sharp on top of it, doing his homework. He will come with a full presentation. You know, you're, if you have children, you always have one that has the PowerPoint presentation to convince you to let them do X, Y, or Z. Mine, who did that when she was little, is now in her second year at BYU Law School, which is not a stretch of, you know, that's what they do. But that's the kind of student that Reed is. He will come with a full presentation that is ready for you.
That's excellent.
It said five minutes, the sign is getting together a little tricky.
Okay.
They'll bring it in.
Okay, okay, sounds great. So um, let's go, do you mind, do you mind just hanging? We'll do, we, we can, this'll move into Providence Hall, which is an, an easy segue for us. And thank you for your patience as we're putting that together. Uh, so this is, and you're welcome to stay.
I'll just walk out.
I was gonna say, no, it's up to you. Uh, but we are excited as well uh, to uh, have Providence Hall Charter School also here today. Remember Marshall is a member on our board and he is in attendance. Uh, I, I figure you representing your school today, do you have any board members here?
Yeah, I do have one of our board members here.
Oh, great, great, great. Excellent. Um, so please come on up and you're welcome to sit and join us. Um, and uh, I'm sorry, I just don't know, I don't remember you.
Introduce yourself. She's one of our newest board members.
She is a board member.
Right on, well, welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
And uh, so please, would you like to, very similarly, would you like to share a little bit more and uh, your successes and then we'll be ready to sign?
Um, I mean, I've, I've been blessed with the opportunity to be a part of Providence Hall for quite a while. And um, it's been an interesting journey as we try to figure out, navigate the interests of our community. And um, I really enjoyed the process we went through with Maria and her team. Um, to really kind of reflect on who we are and uh, get feedback from stakeholders, get feedback from the state charter uh, school board. And uh, really look at some of those key analytics that, that tell us a lot about who we are. And um, the process was great. Uh, we've made a couple of adjustments and um, to, to kind of echo what was mentioned before, uh, you know, in charter space, you, you, you need to kind of think, you know, proactively and, and really think about what's, what's in the best interest for your school and what's in the best interest for the community. And this process has done a lot, lot for us to reflect on that process, also give us an opportunity to kind of think forward. Uh, it's been a great opportunity um, for us to kind of sharpen our sauce, so to speak, and really to think about ways to be better. Um, also just the community and, and, and being able to, you know, reach out to amazing charter schools and, and um, you know, really think about who we are. So kind of being a part of that process with other schools, it's been, been really, really great. So I know she wasn't directly involved in the process. Our board, uh, we had a few that were gonna try to come, but it was just hard with work and stuff. So I think we're kind of organized to come to our, our next board meeting in January to do kind of a more of an in-person signing with our board thing.
We are happy to do that. That's fantastic.
So, yeah, I, we're, it was, it was a great experience and um, we're, this, this whole process is, is phenomenal. I think the signing thing is a good, a great way to celebrate what charters are doing.
So, yes. I was not expecting that. Yeah. But, but Anne, you know, um, remember Marshall, to your point and Director Tox, I think you alluded to this as well, is I can remember uh, as a charter school director, we just wanted to, and I mentioned this last month as well, but we just wanted to stay off the radar. We didn't want to revisit. We didn't, and if we wanted to do something that, that was all, that was uh, potentially being responsive or adjusting the way that we were uh, thinking about our mission and vision. We just didn't feel like we had that flexibility to alter and use it as, as we're growing. Versus the, I felt often it was uh, you know, this was a decade or so ago, but that it was, we weren't actually meeting our needs if we had, if we wanted to adjust. But we know, and we've talked about this this morning, teaching and learning is changing every day. I mean, it's just the way we've been living for the last hundred years has completely shifted in the last five. And I think that we're only going to continue to see that transformation happen at such a quick pace. And so I'm, I'm so glad to hear that you're feeling inspired to want to change, inspired to want to look at how you might want to alter what you're doing for the betterment of your work. And uh, that's just so exciting. And it, and it speaks to uh, just the, the culture of the way that we look at uh, teaching and learning in the state. And especially in our charter school communities. Excellent.
I don't know Katie, if you wanted to add anything to that as a new board member.
No, honestly, I'm just, I'm, I'm amazed of Croppit's whole charter school and being here today, obviously this is one of the first, one of my first few meetings ever. Um, and I'm just learning so much and inspired by all of you and the dedication and the love, the time. Uh, that goes into all of this. So thank you for doing this for our youth, for our state, just and.
Right on. Well, thank you for saying yes and joining, um, joining the board. That's substantial as well. Great. Uh, any comments while we're just at Providence Hall as we're getting, or getting to.
Terrific. Thank you. Another amazing school doing incredible things. So, thank you. Thank you, Nate. And Katie, thank you for joining this board. Serving on a charter school board is one of the most amazing things. I've loved it for many, many years. So it's a great opportunity to pitch in, to support your children potentially and others' children. And help everyone get better. So thanks. Thanks for taking this up.
Excellent. Uh, before we move into our pictures, I'll just, you know, we have two other schools. Uh, Thomas Edison Charter School, they were not able to join us today, but we uh, we've, we've been invited as uh, the state charter school board to join our board meeting in February. So we will uh, we will do a signing, a ceremony and celebration at that point. And then also Wallace Stegner Academy, they're not here today and they've decided to assign a lot of time locally. So we definitely want to give our, our uh, uh, celebration and accolades to, to all of our schools. Uh, with that, we do have the two here today. So I think, yes, Director Kramer, please jump in.
Music next time?
I'm gonna choose not to sign in front of the.
Truly, it's just, it, it is so inspiring to have uh, the people that are serving and doing the work at the school uh, be here. Be willing to sign and just commend the board for the hard work to put together a new charter agreement years ago. Which is the official agreement of our partnership and our work together. And uh, please use that agreement as long as you can without making changes is our suggestion. Um, just give it some runway and let that thing work. Um, because it's really a good document that you've created. So just wanted to share those things. But music is my main thing is uh, music. This is great.
Agreed. Awesome. So with that, uh, why don't we start with Mountain Heights Academy? Come on up and then we'll, we'll Providence. Thankful transparency everybody online and to our guests here today, it's our first time doing this. So I'm really, uh, I'm looking to my directors, where some guidance. Great, thank you. I'm right here. Okay, great. Oh, okay, okay.
Nice work. You all gonna do a picture? Yeah.
So, I know that. Please not, come around. Let's just fill in around it too. I know that the board will be signing and I was. Okay, um, so, okay, I'll sign and we'll, we'll. I know, I know, I'm wearing.
Silent, so we're not, are you squeezing in?
Yeah. Okay, come on up. Let's go ahead and we'll do Providence Hall this way.
Always watching, oh my god.
Awesome. Hey, great. Well, you're coming, shake a tick and then everybody will, I'll see why. Okay, great. Everybody come on in. Let's take time for a watch. Take good minutes and enjoy our song and say hi to folks and then we'll come back and, and uh, and join and finish our board meeting. Awesome. So we'll take just a.
Initiated by the schools, um, which has been exciting to see too. Um, our goal is to have everybody on the new agreement within the next two years, so.
Great.
That's where we're at.
We'll be having lots of these.
Lots of parties.
Yeah, which is neat, it's a, it's a, it's a validation of the work and then I think it provides this school's opportunities to, to look inward and, and think about their. Thank you for that context, Marie, that was really helpful. Okay, so we are in the last, our last business item, or our last item on our agenda today, and that is our executive director report. Normally, you know, we do this at the beginning of our meetings, but we felt just due to the nature of, um, our, our, uh, leadership chef to be thought it would be. This would just be a, a, a way to wrap up our today's report.
Yeah, so without any slides, I just want to say, um, how grateful I am, uh, to have the opportunity to serve uh, all of you, uh, board members. Um, really highly engaged is like just an adjective before what you are, which is a state charter school board. Um, what you've really been is been supportive, which is what we want to be is a supportive authorizer. So for us to extend and want to be a supportive authorizer, it came from the support that we received uh, from all of you as board members, that the past board members have had the privilege to, to serve and then our current full board, uh, that we have. Uh, so just like eternal eternity of gratefulness, uh, to have this opportunity, to have your support, to have your leadership. And then, um, just because we are in a public meeting, just want to say grateful for, you know, our association, the UAPCS and UCN, uh, we have two in Utah, which is twice as good. Uh, and to have those advocacy groups, to have those true partners, uh, has been incredible because you just have, uh, multipliers of the work that we do. Um, and then, of course, uh, the groundwork that our LEA, uh, charter operators do. I mean, that's why we're all inspired and why we're all doing what we do is because children are learning and families have choices to send their children to school and this movement called uh, public charter schools is alive and well. Uh, there's been great things along the way, celebrating 25 years with all of you, um, you know, even up into including signing day coming to fruition, uh, and so many other things. Um, team, uh, I cannot tell you how grateful I am that you are kind, uh, generous with your time. Uh, thank you each and every one of you, um, and then Marie. Yeah. Special, uh, to be able to co-lead with you, so, great job. Um, the executive director's report today is, is really from your new interim executive director, primarily as it should be. So she's fully empowered, she's fully good to go, uh, I have a very small section in the middle of this. Um, but I couldn't help but just use this as an opportunity to say how grateful I am to Utah, to the board, uh, to the associations, to, uh, the schools themselves and the leaders, our team, and, and a call out to you, Marie, for all of your support.
Yes.
Um, executive director's report today as given by your interim executive director.
Thank you very much. Um, well, not being sure exactly what today would hold, uh, you know, we're just giving some updates, uh, of where we've been and where we're headed. Um, and so following our, our template that we've been using, we've got board updates, team updates, uh, goal updates, uh, upcoming events, and then, uh, just some final celebrations. Um, so as far as board updates, um, our state charter school board has been able to be um, providing guidance and collaborating with a few other authorizers across the nation over the past month uh, as a result of our next presentations, uh, taking calls, answering questions, uh, and just really sharing those best practices that are happening here in Utah, uh, which is so exciting. Um, we also, uh, as the state charter school board wanted to just celebrate that Gateway Preparatory Academy had a groundbreaking ceremony. Um, if you, uh, remember, uh, the late director, Andy Burt, um, that was a big dream of his, uh, to expand to a field house down there. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, as the state charter school board were invited to come down, um, I got to speak for a few minutes and just share, uh, the love and support from our board. Uh, and ultimately, uh, it was really a great celebration and, uh, a way to remember him. Uh, they are calling at the Andy Burt Center, uh, which is, uh, really sweet as well. Um, our team is working through, uh, the EOS attraction book, now I have two of those books. Um, yeah, and so, uh, we had our.
Leaving strong.
We had our, uh, in-person, uh, training session just last week. And, uh, the piece that we are currently working on is, uh, vision. And, uh, really making sure that we've captured, you know, what is the vision of the state charter school board? Where are we going? Where are our values? Um, and so, uh, we'll be putting together some pieces, uh, to share with the board over those coming months. Uh, Dr. Kramer, was this where you wanted to maybe speak for a moment about, uh, a few more strong words about traction?
Yeah, we just know that that's one of the goals that you have for executive director leadership is to implement the EOS or the traction model and, um, we routinely get together and, uh, work the traction system. And it's a research-based proven system that helps ensure sustainability. And our team is really, um, really embraced it. Um, the outside support that we get from Onyx who's led us in several professional development, they're doing a great job with it. And, um, you know, we all have numbers. Uh, so my numbers, for example, were two critical meetings every week. One with the executive, associate executive director, now interim executive director on Fridays. And then we have an all-team meeting on Mondays that we also have, uh, and so, uh, those are things that uh, at the beginning of a meeting, I'll say two for two and it's real quick. And if I'm one for two, nobody's like killing me, but it's accountability. And it's a number and it's, and it's a part of the EOS process. And so we're all adopting various parts of this EOS model and it's really going well. And I would say that we are tracking to really, uh, achieve that goal, um, this year. Uh, and that's one of the board, you know, board goals for executive director, um, work. Um, that's about all I have.
Okay, well, leading into our goal updates, um, uh, as you know, the board ha- has those first two goals there. Uh, Dr. Kramer spoke to, uh, that first one, uh, implementing the EOS system. Um, and, uh, also developing a, an executive director evaluation system. Um, and so we will continue moving forward with that. Um, our second goal there, uh, is to implement the accountability framework with a focus on supporting, uh, school governance. Um, and so we'll speak to, uh, you know, where we're going with that. And we did throw in, uh, last month, we had that report back from the National Charter School Institute. Uh, they had two suggested goals in there, um, and so perhaps that will be a, a January topic or a committee work. Uh, if that is the direction that the board would like to go. Um, but just to start thinking about that, uh, the first suggested goal from the National Charter School Institute um, was to develop a three-year strategic framework, uh, for 2026 through 2029. Um, and to really help that, uh, give some shape to our strategic priorities, uh, to find some measurable goals and initiatives. Uh, and making sure that they're all aligned with, uh, the mission and vision of the board. Uh, I think that could work very nicely with that first goal, uh, kind of in, in partnership between those two. Uh, the second goal that the Charter School Institute, uh, recommended is to strengthen authorizing systems and partnerships um, by identifying opportunities for, uh, alignment, support and communication with our schools and our stakeholders. Um, and to really make sure that, uh, the vision that our team has is matched with thoughtful execution. So we'll leave those there with you, but, uh, knowing that we'll probably want to pick up and, uh, finish up those goals, uh, at least identifying them in the next month or two. Um, as far as upcoming events, uh, in January, January 8th is our next board meeting and that's new school applications. Um, if you haven't started reading yet, uh, you'll probably want to get going on that, uh, we do have seven, uh, that are coming. Um, uh, you know, make a cup of hot chocolate and sit by the fire and read a new school application. Uh, January 20th is when legislative session starts, uh, just keeping that on everyone's radar. And then, uh, we also have January 29th is Charter Day on Hill, um, which is, uh, put on by the Charter Association. Uh, we'll, uh, plan to participate in that. Um, we also just wanted to kind of share, uh, a potential vision for the next 90 days. Um, I think, uh, the priority that we have here over the next month is really just, uh, ensuring that we have uninterrupted operations, uh, during our leadership transition. Um, and so really making sure that we are, uh, looking at our strategic plan, we're aligning, uh, any of the work that we're doing, uh, with what we currently have there. Um, knowing that the board also might be considering, uh, some updates to that. Uh, continuing to integrate, uh, the work that we've done with Charter School Institute. Uh, making sure that reports are prepared and aligned with best practices for the new schools when they come in. Uh, making sure that our team, uh, knows what the reporting structure looks like, uh, has, uh, touch points and is able to maintain uh, all of their workflows without disruption. Um, and then also just really providing, uh, board-approved communication that emphasizes, uh, the stability that, uh, our, our team has and, uh, that we have that continuity and that that is shared out to schools, to our state partners, our legislators, uh, and any other stakeholders. Um, that would take us into next, uh, board meeting. Uh, hopefully the next 60 days after that, uh, or the next 30 days, so leading up to day 60. Um, we can, uh, continue to have strong collaboration during the legislative session uh, as well as continuing to execute on strategic plan milestones. Um, so we want to make sure that, uh, as, as your team here to, to serve you board, uh, that we are, uh, coordinating with the legislative analysts, with the State Board of Education, with the legislative committee from our, uh, state charter school board and just really prepared, uh, for a strong showing there. And, uh, that everything that we are sharing is timely and accurate. Um, on our strategic plan, we want to continue to advance our deliverables, uh, with school quality and on the performance frameworks as those continue to roll out to our schools, uh, as well as getting those board-directed governance tools out to our LEAs. Um, we've talked about the onboarding manual, uh, as well as, uh, some policy support, uh, to our schools. Um, additionally, uh, we do have that early stages of accountability work where we are looking at that data validation and really making sure our operators understand what, uh, the updated accountability system looks like. Um, and then again, just continuing to have strong, uh, and consistent representation, uh, at all the different places that, uh, we're expected to be. Um, that third month from now, uh, so day 90 coming into that. Um, we're hoping to have a secure, uh, long-term strategic alignment as well as any legislative outcomes will be just about at the end of session there, uh, are starting to come into actionable plans. Um, of course, the board will be having a hiring process going on through this. Um, but, uh, we're hoping in that process that we'll get a, a strong 12-month, uh, roadmap, uh, that's aligned with all of the direction that our board would like to go. Um, also that we're evaluating the internal team workflow, uh, as we, at that point, uh, it's been a few months since our change and that we can continue to increase efficiency, uh, cross-team coordination and just really be clear, uh, in the direction that we're moving. And then, um, that oversight and government support, um, that's all of our authorizing work, all of our operational expertise that really aligns with, uh, your expectations, your priorities and, uh, the statutory responsibilities that we have. Um, so that is what we're looking forward to, uh, and of course, any guidance or direction from our board, uh, we will be incorporating that as well. So, that concludes our director's report, uh, if you have questions, I'm happy to address those.
Thanks, Marie, I really appreciated that 30, 60, 90. I think especially during this transition, that was really helpful and I really like the focus on our strategic plan and with the goals as our central point and I think, um, revisiting that feedback from NCIS. Every time I say that, I think I'm taking the shelves. Uh, I think will be really important for us to keep central as we're really charting our next course for the next three, or our course for the next three years. Questions, comments for Director Stephenson before we have one last piece? Hey. So, uh, Director Kramer, we do have a, 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 a small gift token of our appreciation. So, you know, we'd like to pass this to you. Um, those are some of my favorite tote bags, so right now, I would say, um.
I read this later?
You can, you can read it later, you can, you can open, you can open it and take a look now if you'd like. Um, you know, I know we've had lots of time, we've shared so much and earlier in the meeting today of just our, our gratitude.
I just caught a few words and I'm like, no, that's been a plane ride. I love snacks and.
Yeah.
You all know that I love. Good times and bad times.
Play for that one.
This one's called Tori's, uh, Iberian ham.
Okay.
And this one looks really hot. Get fresh, I'm done. Okay. I love, love, love chips and then thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Terry off me. More chips?
Yeah. So. We just, uh, we've loved your humor, your realness, your authenticity.
Thank you.
Uh, and of course, and I know we mentioned this earlier, Paul, um, truly had, uh, you know, left your mark and, and made our organization and our work even more powerful. And that, that is, that is the, the that's the mark of an, of an amazing and, and excellent leader. And, um, we are so grateful and, and, and also support. And I think all of us around the table, uh, understand familial ties. And the family that we have is, is critical to our health and happiness and we wish all of that for you and more. And, uh, we better see at NASCAR, I guess.
Right.
In Nashville, maybe, I don't know where, I think that's.
Get out the boots.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. Um, any closing comments from other board members to Director Kramer?
Thank you for that word.
Yes, um, you know, we've been saying them a lot, yeah.
I just, I want to say, I, I just so much enjoyed getting to know Paul, uh, you know, when I first was, uh, considered for this and reached out to me and I think he did that to all of us. We had breakfast, he was nothing but just cordial and kind. But more importantly, I just, you know, I. But more importantly, I just, you know, I recognize how much change has happened in the last two years. It's been astonishing, I think. And and it certainly isn't one person, but it but one person has made a significant impact in that. And and if it's our personal, I know, Paul, I just, I really want to, I just consider you good friends. Bring me friends for life. And and I admire that you are walking the walk with prioritizing family. And, you know, just I I know that your family made a a true, intentful effort to come here. And, you know, your kids are digging roots and and just that pathway needs to be adjusted. And and I'm sure it's not easy for you to walk away something in the middle of building it. This is kind of an apex career position in some ways. And for you to come to, you know, a consensus with your wife and your children on on family comes first, I just, I admire that. And so we're just grateful to to know you. Thank you.
Please be sure to email us your contact information so we can continue to stay in touch. I know that you'll be a resource for Marie and for all of us. But the charter, the charter world often feels big when we're at these big national conferences, but in reality, it is small. And so the work that we do is so meaningful and it's important that we stay connected regardless of where we are geographically. Wow, what a meeting today. That does conclude our business for today. So I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much. And I just, I wish you all the good good health, happiness, tidings and sweet treats over the next several weeks. And I can't wait to see all of you on January eighth. The email with the new charter school applications did come from Betty. So if you're like, oh, my goodness, where is that in my email? I know I tried to put it to the side because I've got a snow blanket and fun Christmas cookies I'm going to be eating while I do those. So just if you're looking for that and if you have any questions at all, especially to our newer board members, because this will be your first time going.